Coming to order, we're online now. Could I ask everyone in the chamber, please stand for acknowledgement of country in the council prayer? I'd like to begin by acknowledging the traditional owners of the land on which we meet tonight. I also like to pay respects to elders past and present. Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee of our safe thy blessing upon this council, direct and prosperous deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Clarence. Amen. I do remind all present that the meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube and what is being said at this meeting is not protected by privilege. And there is a link to the agenda papers on the council's website. We have all present tonight with Alderman's Von Berto and Walker online. Are there any declarations of interest of Alderman or close associate, please? Thank you. Now I'd like to deal with item four, which is a number of items and we'll finish those with a omnibus motion at the end. We'll go through them each one by one. Firstly, confirmation of minutes for the 14th of June and the special council meeting on the 27th of June as circulated, be taken as read and confirmed. Item 4.2, Mayor's Communication, I'd like to table meetings and attendances by myself, the Deputy Mayor, who was acting mayor for a while and also Alderman Peers, I think, is represented at one stage as well. Yes, Alderman James.
A question to you, Mr. Mayor. On the circular for the Mayor's diary entries, there doesn't appear to be that quarterly meeting with Shambrood in relation to, unless I have missed it, on this cheque sheet that's been circulated for the 15th of June to the 14th of July. So I'm just wondering as to whether it was an oversight at all and if it was, perhaps I could ask a question to you as to where we are with in relation to Shambrood and its development at Kangaroo Bay?
Certainly, Alderman James, and you're quite right, it is an oversight. That meeting went ahead and I think the information circular from that meeting was circulated to Alderman, but if you have a question, please go ahead.
Yeah, look, thank you. The time is right, as I would say. And we're very closely approaching the October deadline for substantial commencement as part of the sale and development agreement. Could you sort of provide council and the ratepayers, residents at large as to whether or not there will be another further extension of time sought? Alternatively, as to whether or not, post the date of mid-October 2022, that council may have the opportunity to buy back the land in Kangaroo Bay?
I can confirm that there was no indication that Shambrood were going to request another extension at that meeting. And otherwise, all the information we had and discussed was contained in that circular.
Thank you.
Item 4.3, Council notes the workshops conducted on the 20th and 27th of June and also the agenda briefing on the 1st of July. Item 4.4, tabling of petitions, General Manager. Thank you, Mayor. We have one petition received from 91 signatories requesting council investigate and implement traffic management measures to reduce speed of vehicles travelling on North Terrace Lauderdale to at least a prescribed limit of 50 kilometres an hour in the interest of public safety. It's a complying petition and we will refer that to our traffic management group for report back at probably two meetings from now. Are there any other petitions? Moving on to item 4.5, reports from outside bodies from single joint authorities. Alderman Walker, or in your absence, Alderman Edmonds, is there anything to report on the Copping Refugees disposal site joint authority? Thank you. I certainly have nothing to report in regard to the Greater Hobart Committee, but the acting mayor at the time attended a Tas Water Owners representative group meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a very quick update. The meeting was introduced to the new CEO, George Theo, and considered the corporate plan for 2023 to 27. Couple of highlights, the capex is due to increase from about 250 million currently to over 300 million in the next couple of years. And the forecast profit is due to increase to over 60 million, which is good for our dividend.
Thank you. Are there any other reports from council special committees and other representative bodies?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to record the endorsement of the minutes of the Hara Community Centre of the 26th of May 2022 and just draw council's attention to the new, we could call it a boardroom. It's a new enclosure or newly partitioned area in the foyer of the Hara Community Centre. And it obviously enables extra meeting space for different groups. Also, I did report to council previously regarding the relocation of Hobart Radio FM. And I think we can probably say that that relocation will proceed, given council's decision in relation to the capital works for 2223. So other than that, I'll pass it over to you, to Jill, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman James, any other reports? There being no other reports. 4.8, that we note the information contained in the weekly briefing reports for the 13th, 20th and 27th of June. Alderman James?
I shall move that accordingly and then raise a question, thanks.
Well, we deal with all the movings in second as one goes, so I'll take it that's a moving of the omnibus motion that you've made?
No, not quite, Mayor.
Okay, but yeah, not question.
I did have a question, I think.
Please go ahead.
Yes, we are really doing a lot of to-ing and fro-ing here, I submit. Look, the weekly briefing report of the 27th of June in relation to dune stabilisation at Roaches Beach and Lauderdale Beach Stairs. My question through you, I think to Mr. Graham in his capacity. Mr. Graham, on page three, it refers to the recent works of stabilising the vertical faces of the eroded dune front at Roaches Beach. And it says the recommended approach will be the same as we successfully completed twice over the last couple of years. Could you just advise council as to the extent of this? As to whether it requires anything other than just pushing or backfilling sand into that dune area and also the cost?
Mr. Graham?
Through, Mr. Mayor, I'll have to take on notice of the cost and inform Alderman once at night, but we have to understand maybe three or four days' worth of work for our crews and plant. And we're transporting sand from the north of Amber Reef down to sort of for Amber Reef South. Could be some quite vertical dune places and to make those more stable.
Thank you. All right, could I invite a motion that we adopt the officer's recommendations? Oh, sorry, Alderman Mulder.
Yes, the June 27 weekly briefing reports as well. They contain two, what am I saying, are really disappointing cases of vandalism and pillage. Gilston Bay Soccer Grounds, which does such a great job of getting up to scratch and starting to work with the Junior Soccer League and their requirements down that way. And also the, you know, the Rokeby toilets are getting damaged and they're getting destructive. Mr. Mayor, I'll just ask that, I think one of my very early motions on notice, which was passed by this council, concerned the acquisition of a mobile CCTV capability in order to get it. That motion was passed by council and I'm just wondering, has there been any progress on that? And if so, can I just say that if not, these are the sources of where we could plant them. Where we know there is particular problems and we know the deterrent effect of CCTV surveillance. And here we go, we go on and on and on with damage to public utilities and we all express outrage and express alarm. And here was capacity to try to do something about it and we haven't done anything as we've seen.
Thank you, Alderman Mulder. Alderman, can I ask Mr. Graham or Mr. Tilly whether you're able to help us there?
Through, Mr. Mayor, we'll take that one on notice and advise Alderman of the status.
Thank you. Look, order please, I think that's, if there's no forewarning of the question, I think it's entirely reasonable that some research can be done. And I look forward to seeing the report, thank you, Mr. Graham. If I could now invite a motion that, thank you, Alderman Peers, and seconded Alderman Kendy, put the motion that all those items, the officer's recommendation, be adopted, Alderman, favour? It's carried unanimously, I think. Moving on to item five, public question time, there are no matters on notice there. Are there any questions without notice? We have two, would you please come forward and address the microphone and indicate your name and address too, please?
My name's Joanne Marsh and I live at 32A King Street, Bell Reef. The tired, unloved safety fencing beside parts of the Victoria Espinard Shared Pathway in Bell Reef in places where it hasn't disappeared altogether is now reaching the point of exhaustion. Two panels of the fencing have been disconnected from the posts for many months and pose a fall hazard for users of the path if leant on. So my question is, how is community safety being prioritised by the council to ensure that problems are identified and maintenance is carried out promptly?
We will take that on notice and the answer will appear in the minutes to this meeting.
Yes, about a year ago, there was an incident where one of the gardeners tried to retrieve a child's hat that blew over the fence. And as he leant on it, it actually collapsed and he nearly fell down a small cliff. And I spoke to a lady when I was out walking, she tied a plastic bag to the fence and was going to speak to the council about it, but it's just, well, someone put a black zip tie on it at some stage and now that's gone and it's quite dangerous.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh.
My name's Victor Marsh, I live at 32A King Street, Bell Reef. With respect, with the order of the face of the front, want to ask my question, please?
Well, I don't think that's a reasonable question. I think people are allowed to see who's addressing them.
I believe money has been set aside to fix the continuing stormwater problems at Bell Reef Beach Park, particularly around the Frog Pond area and behind the dunes at the end of Beach Street. Since the completion of the most recent stormwater works in the park, there have been two major rainstorm events, on Friday and Saturday, the 7th and 8th of January, and Friday, the 6th of May. My main concern is that on both of these occasions, stormwater has gushed out from under the seawall and washed away large sections of the western end of the beach. Substantial sand replacement was needed and on the first occasion, on the first occasion, heavy machinery on both occasions to repair the damage, which included the beach pontoon being removed. My question is, what has been the cost of these repairs and what amount of money has been allocated to assess and fix these specific new problems?
Thank you very much, Mr. Marsh, and we'll take that on notice as well and the answer will be in the minutes to this meeting. And I believe the General Manager has one question that was emailed in.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a question without notice from Mr. Russell Hill of Gilston Bay. Mr. Hill's question is, in regard to resident rates, how many residential properties are within the boundaries of Clarence City Council? What are the highest and lowest rates notices generated? And if all residents paid the same equal amount of rates, what would be the average total? We have some details in respect to that, but they are probably not appropriate to be read out, so I can include those in the minutes as well, if that's acceptable.
That concludes that item, item six, deputations from members of the public, understand there are none?
There are none.
So I now advise that council intends to sit as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act. The first item there is a development application at One Dominic Way in Rokeby for two multiple dwellings, Alderman Mulder.
I have an alternative motion which was previously circulated, which is for approval.
Thank you, do I have a second for that, please? Thank you, Alderman James, Alderman Mulder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a case here where some units have proposed for Dominic Way in Rokeby and they've been refused by, recommended for refusal by the planning staff based on the fact that the setback of one of the two frontages is not compatible with the requirements of the scheme. The problem is the setback, the setback according to the technical definition of a frontage is on, for this corner block, is based on the frontage to Danes Way, which is just longer than the frontage to Dominic Way. As a consequence, the orientation and siding of the units has resulted in a 4.5, a complying frontage to Dominic Way, but not a complying frontage to the non-dominant, to the non-dominant frontage. The first point that needs to be made is that the address of the dwelling, and it's an indication that at the time council approved the subdivision plan, the address is One Dominic Way. Clearly, this lot was meant, designed to be part of Dominic Way, not Danes Way. So the main point is that, and that is the only basis for refusal. I think it is well within our discretion, and there have been no representations at all in relation to this particular site, that it is appropriate for us to determine that the most appropriate frontage is that to Dominic Way. If that's accepted as the appropriate frontage, then this particular development wouldn't have even come to us at all. It would have been approved as of right. So because of this, and the last point is that, I think the most important thing is that the access to this block, if it were to front Danes Way, then the whole units would have to be oriented. And you would have an unnecessarily steep driveway coming up over a bank and then approaching a slope of 16 degrees. And then you have to be, the parking requirements are, the onsite parking has to be level or near enough to level. So then you'd have a steeper thing, you know, it just, it's just an illogical and unnecessary impediment to the most appropriate and logical and natural use of this particular block. So I would encourage Alderman to support the approval because it ticks the boxes in every way except the illogical use of a frontage.
Thank you, Alderman James.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an interesting scenario in relation to this because we are looking at the setback and it's been already identified that the proposal meets this requirement setback from a natural and illogical frontage of Dominic Way. Now, the street address of the site is One Dominic Way and one strata titled Unit One will have a frontage only to Dominic Way and not to Danes Avenue. See council's support.
Thank you, other speakers? Alderman Edmonds?
Just really briefly, I support the motion. But I also think this is like how the system is working. Then if some of it obviously comes through refusal, then it would form a sense of, right, it's not good.
Thank you. Alderman Von Berto? Are you muted, Alderman Von Berto? If we can just get your voice online, please?
Well, I can't hear, I've got my sound on and I can't hear you.
We can hear you loud and clear now.
Right, thank you. Well, I couldn't hear Alderman Edmonds at all.
Okay, the number of his comments was that he supports the motion as before the chair.
Ah, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll speak now then. I won't be supporting Alderman Mulder's alternative motion as I consider that it best ignores the current planning scheme definition of primary frontage. But in actual fact, it redefines scheme definition. And I don't believe that council, acting as a planning authority, has the discretion to alter scheme definition. In actual fact, under section 48 of the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act, that requires council as a planning authority to make sure that it must, within the ambit of its powers, observe and enforce the observance of that planning scheme in respect to use and development undertaken in the area to which the planning scheme relates. So I won't be supporting Alderman Mulder's alternative. So I won't be supporting Alderman Mulder's alternative motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Von Berta. Other speakers, Alderman Pearce, I think you are next.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, when I first read the officer's recommendation, I totally agreed with them and totally agree with Alderman Von Berta, but driving up there and having a look at the site, I'm in favour of the alternative motion, Mayor, because really, I can't see that it would make a lot of difference to me. Having the driveway on Dominic Way is far more sensible than Danes Avenue, to be perfectly honest. So I'm supporting the recommendation before us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't going to speak to this because I thought it was a very solid and sound alternate motion. Having had no representations against this, the access makes sense, so I'll be supporting it one hundred percent.
Thank you. Alderman Bromley.
Likewise, Mr. Mayor. I don't think I need to talk to this either, but I will just very briefly. I wasn't able to make the agenda briefing on Friday. I did, however, look at the recording on yesterday evening and the point there was made quite clearly that our officers, because of the setbacks under the scheme, don't have the power to give discretion. They don't have the power, but we do, however, have the power. As Alderman Edmonds quite correctly articulated earlier, we have that opportunity here to bring a common sense approach. I commend Alderman Mulder on this very sound motion. This is a sensible way forward and I urge colleagues to support it.
Thank you. Alderman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I commend our planning officers on sticking to the letter of the law, but to quote Dickens, sometimes the law is an ass and we get to overball it.
Any other speakers? Rory Fly, Alderman Mulder.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Just very briefly, this is permitted by the planning scheme. If it was not permitted by the planning scheme, then there would be some sort of calling powers by the tribunal to say, no, you have failed to enforce the planning scheme. In fact, the planning scheme allows, just allows you to build just about anything you like, provided your neighbours are happy with it and we as a council are happy with it. Because otherwise, or because if that was not the case, then there would be capacity for someone, for an appeal to be lodged or for the planning commission to tap council on the shoulder and say, sorry, you shouldn't have applied that, you shouldn't have approved that, so we're going to call that in and we are going to apply the strict letter of the planning scheme. But the fact remains, and I think I can't really sum it up any better than I think Alderman Warren did, is that if we apply the strict letter of the law, black letter law with no interpretation and no discretion, then you will end up with not just this, but many, many perverse situations. Because a planning scheme cannot take, have regard to all the fine tunes of it. And it's surprising that they've gone to this level of definition of what is a subjective criteria, of a subjective criteria about what is the most appropriate access across the board for the whole state. And here we have a corner block where clearly, at the time of the subdivision, Dominic Way was supposed to be the access and it is the most logical, natural access. So I encourage Alderman's.
Thank you. So the motion before the chair is the alternative as circulated by Alderman Mulder for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Moving on to item seven point two, it's a development application for twenty-one Vaughan Court Tranmere for a one-lot subdivision. Alderman Bromley, thank you. Second, Alderman Pearce, Alderman Bromley.
Mr. Mayor, I move the officer's recommendation.
Okay, Alderman Pearce.
Same here, it's only subdivision at this stage and I went and had a look at the site and really, I can't see any reason why we refuse the subdivision.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this? Alderman James?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I in fact, and I know a number of my colleagues have been to the site and inspected the area in which the subdivision is being proposed. Now, look, there's a couple of things here that really I find that is really difficult to sort of justify in relation to where this subdivision is occurring. On page forty-one, it discusses that on the eastern upper side of Vaughan Court, dwellings have a relatively substantial setback from the street and car parking is generally provided off-street in the driveways. So in those particular areas, there is this setback, but not to the degree to which this is being proposed. It's on a twenty-three degree incline slope and by the very nature of having to actually access the block, and we can talk about the subdivision here, not what's going to be built on it, but the subdivision because of the nature in which this particular area and development is going to occur. Now, also on page forty-one, the officer's report, development existing within the nearby area is comprised of single detached dwellings. However, beyond a two fifty metre radius from the site, medium density are located to the south within Yottsmun's Way and to the southeast in Cherrington Drive. So in that new area of subdivision, you have moderately a flat area and not to the slope and also to the difficulty that development will have to occur in relation to this. It is on a point where it's going to cause any development to oversee and to the properties in the direct vicinity. The setback is greater than any other proposal that has been built or dwellings that have been built in the area, other than when I mentioned on the southern side. So it already is not really in keeping with the existing buildings on that particular area in Vaughan Court. I will not be supporting this recommendation because I believe it's inappropriate and therefore the development and the location of this particular subdivision is inappropriate and it's not in accordance with, I believe, is appropriate development in the area.
Thank you. Other speakers, please. Rory Fly. Alderman Walker, thank you. Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This site does give me concerns. And I've gone through the report, I've looked over the site. I'm standing a degree of comfort around how the matter will be progressed, especially around what work and excavation can be done. Now, that is a building permit matter and that rests upon all of us to dwell, whether enough comfort can be put into that process. I look forward to hearing other people's perspectives, but I do, I do hold some concerns and part of our job is to weigh everything up and to understand that things can progress in a safe fashion. I guess if this is unsuccessful tonight, then there'll be the opportunity for negotiation. I'm not saying it would happen, but it is something that could happen and that might need to lead to some more robust processes around, yeah, planning permits, et cetera. But there is, there is some topographical concerns that I'm not sure that the report does satisfy the addresses.
Thank you. Alderman Mulder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it is a, almost a contorted thing, given the slope of the land. If it was on the flat, you would sort of say, well, sort of, but you know, we've got a steep, we've just talked about a similar, which is actually the reverse. But the fact is, is that it does, I think, by and large, conform as a subdivision and most of the issues that have been raised have been actually raised in relation to the fact that it's a steep slight and there's a fair bit of digging out and there's some pretty hard rock down there, as others have discovered in the past. And the concerns relate to actually, that have been raised, some of the representative concerns relate to the impact of rock, you know, of rock removal with the hammer point and also the rock breaker, but also some concerns and some suggestion that there's been blasting. Now, I was under the impression, with our experience from Rosney Hill, that blasting was no longer permitted in residential areas than that, you know, it all had to be down to rock breaker. In any event, I've had some discussions with the person who's concerned about probably damage to his property. And it's not about the planning permit, it's about the building permit phase when it comes up to time to build and excavate the land. I would be surprised if blasting was permitted and the impact of the rock breaker would substantially alleviate, I think, any concerns that neighbouring residents might have had. But just for the record, I would strongly suggest that neighbouring households contact their insurance companies and take their advice. So should there be any damage as a result, that they are in a position to at least let the insurance companies fight it out, rather than having the big insurance company fight a small individual owner. So I have those concerns, but they are all in the, in the building stage and we are here now talking about lines on maps and I can't see any real reason not to support that.
Any other speakers? Alderman Edmonds.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, obviously, there's been, a few of us raised the issues about the next step and I might circulate the memo that myself and Alderman Mulder and a few others may have seen about the process of the concerns about rock breaking and things like that aren't considered in this window. And I guess that's where people go, where it's a sort of chip, chip, chip away. And I think the word conforming was used by a previous speaker and that's where we get put in the, in the vice a bit about this, is it does conform. And those issues have to sort of be dealt with at the next stage as the memo that we were sent said that, you know, I can advise the method of future construction works associated with a dwelling construction is not a relevant consideration under the scheme, but relevant to the building permit application process that may apply to the construction of a future dwelling. And council's building team have indicated that the owners will be required to engage a building surveyor to determine any requirements under the Building Act two thousand and sixteen and the directors determinations for a certificate of likely compliance and Form Six notice of protection work, blah, 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 which will address the protection of adjoining properties from damages incurred because of building construction works and there's obviously more to it. I just also, yeah, so while it does conform, it is quite a contorted sort of subdivision. And I can only reflect on some issues that we've had around and this council indeed supported smaller lot sizes out at Acton Park of a hectare. But that gets knocked back. I did a quick Google Maps search this afternoon. It's a lot quicker to get from Acton Park to indeed this chamber, Hobart CBD. Acton isn't this far-flung hamlet that it might have been considered a while ago. And I'm getting a bit off topic here, whereas in Tranmere, you can stack units out the back that are far further away from anything. And I just think that's worth reflecting on when the commission might have another look at Acton down the road of what they're allowing to happen further away from services, but what they won't allow to happen now.
Thank you. Rory Fly. Alderman Bromley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just picking up from where of the previous speaker, Leif Doff, the issue with Acton Park and lot sizes there, something that has often baffled me, I know many others in this place, but let's get back to the issue in front of us tonight and that is for a one-lot subdivision. And as we're told by professional advice we've been invited with, the proposals consist to the outcomes of state policies. It's also the knowing consistencies with the council's strategic plan and that's why it's been recommended for approval. In the absence, Mr. Mayor, of any alternate motion, I strongly urge my colleagues to support this very sound recommendation from our officers.
Thank you, Alderman Bromley. Recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. I think we had one abstain there. That concludes our business as a planning authority. Next item on the agenda takes us through to governance, item eight point four point one, which is requesting approval for a delegation to the GM for fees and charges already identified as being the responsibility of the general manager under our fees and charges schedule. Do I have a second for that, please? Thanks, Alderman Mulder, second, Alderman Kendy. Alderman Mulder.
Very briefly, Mr. Mayor, this was discussed at some extent at the agenda briefing on Friday, where I think some of my initial concerns were at least addressed and for me, put to bed, but some may have a different view. This is a, really a procedural matter to try to give effect because every time the general manager wants to vary a lease on council property or to make some exemption and there are some, you know, in the report which are already flagged up, we really shouldn't be having to wait three weeks, up to three weeks or more, for it to come before a council meeting so we can make an appropriate rubber stamp. The report and all the rest of it gives the general manager some guidance as to the kinds of issues he should consider and I'm sure that if he does not do that, then, but then it won't be long before we might have something to say about the general manager's exercise of the discretion. The other thing is that I think it would, it would be a common sound practice, given the elected nature of this chamber, that the general manager would at least, you know, advise us of his intention to proceed before exercising his delegation, even if it doesn't get formal approval of council and that no doubt would be guided by the advice he informally gets. So this is just a way of getting past, you know, the fact that council doesn't sit every day and that the course of business needs to be conducted. But as I said, although it is technically unfettered, there is plenty of guidance as to how it should be used and I'm quite confident that should the general manager seek to either not keep us in the loop ahead of time or misuse this delegation in a way that we hadn't intended, that the delegation, if not the tenure of the GM, may be somewhat shortened.
Alderman Kendy.
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, I wasn't at the agenda briefing on Friday, but I've read the report. To me, this is a very sensible way forward. I think on page sixty-one point four, that says, under strategic plan policy implications, the change sought us specifically to deal with daily operational manager matters, which is what our general manager needs to be able to do without having to bother us. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers, Alderman James?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those who actually listened in to Friday's briefing and also present, I think you would understand the concern that was raised in relation to any delegation that is being handballed to the general manager, regardless of whether it's an operational matter or whether that determines as to whether we in this chamber have some sort of exercise and ability to make decisions regarding operational matters. So I think that really needs to be addressed in relation to this. There was a lot of discussion and on page sixty, my question was to the general manager and he very kindly identified under the fees and charges that were specific to this particular matter. And that was really important because I thought from the first, in the first instance, Mr. Mayor, and you know how I've been on this issue, issues for the last thirty years about delegation and how much responsibility ought to be handed to the general manager or to the executive in this place. But nevertheless, on page sixty, two point four, it says quite clearly, and we actually had those fees and charges list put up on the screen, which specifically referred to those items. And once I saw that, okay, I thought to myself, right, there we have it. There we have it in, in black and white. And just to put the public at ease on this, on two point four, it says the list of fees and charges specifies certain fees that the general manager may remit in part or in full. And I'm quoting, fees for use for public places by charitable organisations or for fundraising. That is in the black and white within the list of fees and charges under a different heading to some of these other ones that I'm about to refer to. B, high charges for the Riston Vale Hall. And we've had a lot of issues over the years in relation to that. But more importantly, on page sixty-one, C, statutory advertising fees in relation to requests for road closures on application from charitable organisations, fundraising and some sporting events. Now, once we were, and I hope that a number of my colleagues did actually listen in to the broadcast on Friday, Agenda Briefing, because those specific...
to the broadcast on Friday, Agenda briefing, because those specific items were identified under the list of fees and charges. So having said that, I believe it's fairly watertight. Nothing is watertight, Mr. Mayor, in this day and age particularly. But in this particular case, it has been listed under the fees and charges, specifically those three items I've just said, and I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you, Alderman James. Any other speakers? Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, Mr. Mayor, I'll just make the point that this council employs a general manager. That's our role as directors of this organisation. We appoint the CEO, the general manager of this council, and we entrust that individual to then run the organisation. This is a big business. This is a serious business. And here we are, wanting to tick everything off of the general manager, expecting to do. It's business as usual, as far as I'm concerned. We've employed a professional to act professionally, to do our job. The fact that, and I tuned in, as I said, I'm sorry, I didn't tune in live, I watched the recording of the agenda brief on Friday, and let's be clear, there are only three people there, Alderman James, Alderman Pearce, Alderman Mulder.
You stick to the names.
Everyone else had an opportunity to tune in, as I have done, Mr. Mayor. And I've got to say, I was staggered by what I heard. From my perspective, Mr. Mayor, this is a serious organisation, we've employed a professional to do his job to the best of his ability, there aren't mechanisms there to assess and regularly review, and as directors, it's important that we do that. But for me, this is absolute no-brainer, and the fact that there would be anyone that would have a concern with this at any part of the process is to me quite concerning. I wholeheartedly support the motion, and frankly, let the general manager get on with the business of running this council.
Thank you, Alderman Bollman. Do we have any other speakers on this matter? Alderman Pearce.
I wasn't going to speak on this, but look, I do totally agree with Alderman Bollman there. I mean, I was at the briefing on Friday, and to say that, you know, we want all the boxes ticked and whatever, I mean, there's 12 of us around this room that take this job pretty seriously. And I mean, we wouldn't be supporting this unless we had confidence and the regulations are there that were brought out at the briefing on Friday. So I totally agree with Alderman Bollman, let the general manager get on with it.
Thank you. Other speakers? Write a reply, Alderman Mulder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, did I miss Alderman Von Verdo? Sorry?
Mr. Mayor, it's a minor matter, but I believe that on the second last line, it needs to be either at his, her discretion, because it may be in the future as a female general manager.
I believe you can amend it.
Would you be happy to have his or her, rather than just his?
Why not just their?
I accept the amendment.
Sorry?
I accept it.
Okay, the amendment is accepted. Thank you, Alderman Von Verdo. It'll be their application. Their discretion or on the application. Okay, good point. And Alderman Mulder, I apologise for the interruption last time. Do you have a write a reply?
There's no need for you to apologise, Mr. Mayor. I'll just take a little point, this, the debate around the table almost led us to believe that we should all pack up and go home and delegate everything to the general manager. Delegations are an important matter, not a trivial matter. Delegations are things that this council, by law, is required to take ownership and management of. A delegation is an indication of trust as well as for expediency. So I would really like to point out that here is a case where I am, and I have suggested, that the delegation is appropriate, and I've put some conditions around, and I've put my thoughts around what we have the process, and I'm sure that those thoughts will be taken on board. But I just want to get away from the idea that somehow or other, we employ the general manager, and he is on 10 times our pay grade, I might add, that we employ the general manager for the operational management of this council. We are the ones responsible for the policy management of this council. So in that sense, when there needs to be a policy decision made, we have, for operational purposes, a limited, and so it should be, range of areas where we consider it appropriate to delegate our responsibilities to the manager. That's what the word delegate means. So as far as I'm concerned, this is an appropriate case where we delegate our responsibilities to the general manager, and it should not be as a matter of course, it should not be as a matter of expediency, it should always be as a matter of considered judgment and for the efficiency of the organisation to be running within the policy guidelines of this council. So I would encourage you to, and I believe this particular motion meets those criteria, and therefore is an appropriate matter for delegation.
Thank you. So the motion before the Chair is as recommended, with a slight variation that either at their discretion or on application. Put the motion, all those in favour? That's carried unanimously. Item 8.4.2 is the lease of public land of 15 Eleanor Court, Acton Park, to Telstra Corporation for existing telecommunication tower. Thank you, Alderman Ewington. Alderman Edmonds, thank you.
Just, no, it's per office's recommendation, I think it was an existing tower that provides a central community service, it's just tidying up a legal anomaly and a change of ownership that we need to rectify, so I think it's quite straightforward, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Edmonds. Other speakers? Put the motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously, thank you. Which brings us to item 9.1, motions and notice, Alderman Bollman.
Mr. Mayor, I remember the motion setting in my moment.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Alderman Pearce. Alderman Bollman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over this term of council, there's been a great deal of talk about master plans. As we know, a master plan is a long-term plan that provides a vision and framework for how an area can grow and develop. These plans provide certainty for community members and developers about what change is expected in an area, and can respond to matters including but not limited to land use and development, transport and parking, building and urban design, heritage, character, employment and open spaces. In short, Mr. Mayor, master planning is a method for defining clear strategies for the physical, economic and social transformation of places. A master plan is a plan giving overall guidance. It is therefore, I'm sure we would all agree, absolutely essential that we get our master plans right. Mr. Mayor, at present, this council has 30 master plans at differing phases under consideration. As outlined in the explanatory notes, there are 22 asset management plans currently underway, five planning master plans presently underway, and three city planning master plans proposed for next financial year. And that's appropriate. And based on last Tuesday's ABS 2021 census data for the Clarence LGA, our population growth is growing at a higher rate than previous estimates, and this naturally places a corresponding pressure on our infrastructure, housing availability, open spaces and all other associated aspects. It is therefore important that we get our planning right. That all our master plans are dynamic, long-term planning documents that provide a conceptual layout to guide future growth and development in our city is absolutely essential. Now, to do this, Mr. Mayor, we have responsibility as directors to ensure our staff are appropriately resourced. Our staff have a responsibility to engage with our community, to ensure our master plans meet the expectations of key stakeholders, and are delivered in a timely, professional and the most cost-effective manner. Mr. Mayor, in recent months, I believe it's fair to say, there has been significant comment in this chamber regarding master plans. There have been quips about the need for a master plan for the master plans. Well, this motion is the first step. In an open, transparent and accountable manner, this council is going to prioritise the order of master plans and, based on professional advice, publicly advertise the timeframes for completion and the required resourcing levels. All too often, our community feels let down and frustrated by the time it takes to deliver our promised master plans. There is a need to ensure the expectations of all stakeholders are managed through open and transparent communication and accountability mechanisms, which is what this motion before us this evening will deliver. Mr. Mayor, this motion will ensure council is totally upfront with our community on what exactly our strategic priorities are, as well as the costs and timeframes associated with the delivery of master plans throughout our city. I commend the motion, Mr. Mayor, and seek the support of colleagues.
Thank you, Alderman Bollman. Alderman Pearce.
Thank you. I probably would have put up a slightly different motion, but I'd congratulate Alderman Bollman for bringing the master plan topic. As a lot of people know, I'm not a great fan of having 30 master plans of different phases, because one thing about master plans, in the end, they've all got costs attached, or 90% will have costs attached. Now, it's all right if it's only $1,000 for each master plan, but if it starts, it's up to $100,000, $200,000, $300,000 in the end. I mean, what are we doing? We know the budget's going to be tight for the next couple of years, so to bring these to a work, and I would say workshops, not workshop, because I think it's going to take a while till we get what master plans are there and what the need is for them or whatever, because 30 is a fair damn lot, because the budget's going to be tight for a fair few years yet. And that's why I'm very pleased to support this, because at least it's going to, every Alderman is going to see the master plan and see what, I know some are interlocking with other master plans, but we really need to have a good look at this, because I don't want staff doing master plans if we're not, if, as Alderman was saying, well, we're not going to fund that, or we're not going to fund that, or we're only going to partly fund it. So let's get to the stage to see where we are, to see what we want to prioritise. And I even said to the general manager, and I don't think he really accepted, but some of the master plans maybe, you know, maybe we say, no, we're not going to fund that at all. So at least we know where we stand on these. And to have 30 still outstanding, I think is quite a few.
Thank you, Alderman Mulder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wasn't able to attend the briefing on Friday because I was at the Local Government Association AGM, and I too listened to the debate on record afterwards. My understanding is that a lot of this already happens, and that we already report regularly on master plans. Now, perhaps that can be improved a little bit, perhaps a traffic light report, you know, on budget or on time, on track, would make it easier for some people to see that information at a glance. But I guess what concerns me about this motion is that it adds another layer of bureaucracy, which is going to stop our planners from actually progressing our master plans, because they're too busy reporting on the progression of the master plans, in addition to the reporting that they're already doing. So I say, well, you know, as a board of directors, we appoint the GM, and we should let the GM get on with managing the council.
Thank you, Alderman Mulder. Other speakers? Alderman Mulder.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll be supporting this motion as the architect of the, we need a master plan for master plans. Part of that exercise too is, we've got a lot of master plans, and we've got ones that have been completed, and they've been completed so long that we've almost forgotten we're going to do them, and that when we do come to do them, we have to do them again because they're out of date. So there is a question about, at what point do you put master plans in place, what time do you start the process, and there ought to be some idea about, well, we're going to do a master plan for this particular area, for these particular reasons, and that we intend to do them. But we also need to separate a little bit between the master plans that we intend to do, the ones we intend to fund and intend to build, out of our own capital works project, out of our own budgets. There are also ones that we need to get to a certain point, so that they are maybe not quite shovel-ready, but at least at a stage where an incoming, where a, you know, where the people that do have the money, namely the state and federal governments, in their desire to, you know, move into elections with particular projects, and like roads, for example, is one where we want to get a project or a concept up to a stage where someone can go to an election and say, yep, we could do that, we can pick that one up and we can do it. Now, that's a master plan that sort of just sits in the wings, waiting to do it. The priority, of course, are the ones that we intend to do, fund and build. And here we come to some limits. If we look at our capital works budgets over the time, there's a limit to the amount of stuff that we can do out of the rates. And as such, there ought to be a limit to the number of master plans we've got on our lots at any given time, because they need to be done at a time when they are within a frame of being completed. There's also all those little projects that are on the go, which appear in our annual budgets. And I would like to see if we're going to have some sort of reporting, and I noticed that master plans are already done in the coiler reports, and there's a link to the website against all those, each strategic plan, progress and completion status is already reported to that website, so it's available for the public. And it's not only the public that we've got to keep on for, it's us as well, because we get lost in the number of volume of the master plans and their status. The other thing that I'd do is that we've also got these other projects, and it would be nice if we had a very simple report, which went through in the coiler report, a link to a page, which said, this particular project is funded in this year's budget, at this stage, the funding's been allocated, but nothing else has happened, and later on, yes, you know, the design has been completed, and then later on, a stage where it's, you know, tenders have been let, then it's under construction, and then it's completed. And if you had that sort of a remark, just, you know, a traffic light thing is fine, just ticking off which stage each project's at, it would be extremely useful, and I'm sure it would probably get rid of a lot of Aldermanic requests that are going in, elected members' requests for people wanting to know what's happening with this, what's happening with that. So, you know, I support the general thrust of the motion, we're doing a lot of it anyway, but it's also capable of being fine-tuned, and I don't think that we're going to have to put on an extra FTE to manage project management.
Thank you. Other speakers? Right, Alderman James?
I wasn't going to speak to the motion, but I thought, after careful consideration, that anything we are going to need to resource from a master plan perspective is, in my opinion, something that we basically need to let those matters coast along as and when we require them, and we can cherry pick for whatever time, for whatever project which is incorporated within a master plan. I just don't want to go on and address this any further than what it is. It really is a waste of time. It's a waste of time when we could spend more of our time on core matters within the city, and look at when we need to actually use or call in those particular projects in those existing plans. And that's already been done, and the officers know when to present that particular project to us as part of the plan that we have endorsed over the years. And we have a number of these, which we are still cherry picking, in a sense. We've got the Kangaroo Bay master plan. Now, that is extensive master plan, and we are calling upon aspects of that over the course of the development in that particular area, notwithstanding that some of those projects haven't actually met the substantial commencement phase. So, and also, there are other master plans which is in there. I just don't want to go on with this. I don't think it's necessary. I think there are more important matters that we can deal with. Okay, by acknowledging that there are 30 plans, recognise the importance of it, okay, that goes without saying, but when we are starting to agree to a priority of these to be made public and to be provided with a regular project status update, we don't need it. We only need to call on those projects as and when required. I will not be supporting this motion.
Thank you, Alderman James. Alderman Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I understand the logic of this motion, but I really can't support it, and there are several reasons why. The first is when it talks about that, after the workshops, we will agree, the order of priority, happy with that, timeframes for completion, there are so many variables in timeframes for completion of master plans. We cannot possibly, at a workshop or even several, determine all of those timeframes for completion. That's just not feasible. Same with appropriate resourcing levels. If you look how much prices have gone up over the past couple of years, if we'd done this previously, we would be woefully under-resourced in looking at the master plans. It just seems to me that it's putting too, trying to put too much detail into consideration of what we can reasonably do, and that for me is a major problem. I also take the point that's been mentioned by several Aldermen, including Alderman Mulder, that a lot of this stuff is already available. I also take the point that's been mentioned by several aldermen, including Alderman Mulder, that a lot of this stuff is already available to us. It's already in the quarterly reports. I do think it would be good to do a bit better communication on that. So it takes a bit of effort to find it sometimes in the quarterly reports to pull that together. Perhaps as a traffic light, as was suggested, with some ideas about how we can see the status of the master plans would be a really good way for us and the community to see where we are with this. I don't doubt that there's some logic behind this notice on motion, but I don't think it does what it's intending to do and I can't support it.
Thanks, Alderman Chong. Alderman Walker?
Yeah, look, thank you for that. So I think if B and C are taken out for the reasons Alderman Chong suggested, then I'm all on board with it. But for a capital C caveat, this will need to occur no sooner than sixteen, seventeen weeks. It needs to form part of the briefing of a new incoming council about what the master plans are and for the priority to be then decided. Because here's the deal, it's unlikely that all twelve of us will recontest. It's unlikely that all twelve of us will get back. So the idea that we just set a, you know, a set of process to the next council and say, this is the way it is, these are the order, these are the timeframes, this is how you go about it. That doesn't wash when we're talking about, I would suggest, and the general manager could object if I'm wrong. But we're what, seventeen, eighteen weeks away from a next council meeting? And it's for them to decide that, we work with what we work now. But this is an ongoing process and realistically, it would be much more beneficial and appropriate for this to be something occurring in, you know, some point after seventeen or eighteen weeks from now.
Thank you. Alderman Yewick.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, look, you know, we go back to the core versus essential role of council. And it is to, you know, look after the roads, rights and rubbish and obviously the master planning for, you know, public open space, recreation, sports grounds, community space, cultural heritage, all that sort of stuff. And that's what a lot of these are about. They're not just about sports facilities. But to suggest that we should just coast along and let it all happen without us having direct say in what goes on and what the priorities are is absurd. Right? At the end of the day, the reason why we're in this position now is because we have totally under-resourced the staffing in this space to allow those things to happen. There are that many things in there that were approved in budgets two or three years ago that haven't been looked at. None of us have chosen to pick the order or decide what's deferred and what's not done. It's just chosen by staff at the moment. Which, it's not their fault, they're doing the best with the resources they've got. We have not directed the GM to actually get organised, tell us exactly what he needs to make these things deliverable so that we can actually move ahead. Now, this is all about transparency for the public, transparency to us as aldermen. And to suggest that this information is being shared with us at the moment so that we can make an informed decision is just not, it is not true. There is no way that we're getting enough information at the moment to know exactly where all these things are at. There's things, you know, I can think of plenty that were in budgets two years ago that have not moved. And no one's told us why they haven't moved or when they're going to move or what's going to happen and why they haven't and why someone else has. You know, and I mean, I know, you know, with the active living plan that's gone out to community consultation, I know how much work is in that document in relation to coming up with some of the plans and policies and frameworks that are needed to deliver that strategy. There is not a hope in hell of any of that being done with the staffing levels we've got available to us now. Let alone catching up on all of these master plans that are sitting there. Then the staff dealing with the sports groups' request for funding in the next twelve months, dealing with maintenance, dealing with the Bayview college master plan, oh sorry, business plan that needs to be developed, you know, finishing the existing project. So, look, you know, it is just not practical. And I mean, look, I understand where Alderman Walker is coming from in relation to, it's not up to us to set the decision-making now. But to suggest that we should just wait another four months or three months till that all happened later, I'm not happy with that. Because we're not going to, you know, get to, you know, even if we got straight into it now, we're not going to make these decisions and make them final in the next few months. But to start collecting the information and to have a discussion about where we're going to be in the next, you know, six to twelve, oh sorry, next four years' time and make it transparent is what it comes down to. The other issue that we need to look at is all the money that we've allocated for consultants to do this work. It might be more appropriate for us to actually employ the staff to set up a division, which I know the GM talked about to a certain extent. But we've got a couple of extra staff there at the moment now. But maybe the money that's been allocated in the budget for some of this planning work could be in there. So we've got some continuity with staff that are working on these projects moving forward over the next few years to allow us to keep the knowledge and the information that's shared between the community and the council to make these things happen. Now, all of those discussions haven't been had. We haven't had a discussion about, you know, selling off, you know, some council assets to help fund this sort of stuff. We haven't, we had a brief discussion about borrowing money for some of these legacy projects that could be, that could help fund some of, you know, taking a loan over an extended period of time to do that. And there was eleven out of twelve support for going down that path. We haven't even looked at any of that. And all we've done is said, well, we're that much, we're that far behind, we can't do anything now. So we'll just cut back in our capital works this year and just wait and see what happens. Right? We put up the white flag and said, oh, it's just all too hard, we can't do anything. Well, you know, I applaud Alderman Bonney, I bring this motion forward because it actually addresses the real issue, which is that over the last ten to fifteen years, as a council, this space has been seriously neglected. The transparency around what's being done and what needs to be done just hasn't been there. And we have a responsibility to make that more, us to be more aware about what's going on, us to have more of a say in the prioritisation of particular projects. Because if people come to us now and ask us where's things happening, we couldn't tell them. You know, suggest that we're being kept, you know, in the loop and some of this work is going on. Well, I mean, I'd rate it about one out of ten in relation to how much information we're getting and how much involvement we've had up to now. And that's not anyone's fault because we as aldermen have to take responsibility for that as well. Because we've allowed that to develop over the last four years, well, this council has. You know, I mean, I've been saying for a long time that we're under-resourced in this space, you know, in the staff perspective. But, look, I just think this is really important for us as a community to look at. The community development, you know, the wellbeing of the community, you know, the cultural, the historical, the sporting, you know, that certainly provides everyone out there in the community is something that's just so essential that we put, you know, get serious about this stuff. And, you know, to suggest that we could just coast along and, you know, just see what happens and, you know, we're in this situation for a reason. And it's time that we actually did something about it. I encourage everyone to support this motion. It might not be perfect, but at least it'll get us moving on actually making something happen and making this transparent and getting some accountability and us being able to make some decisions on what we actually do need to do to make it happen.
Thank you, Alderman. Yes, Alderman Kendy.
Excuse me, thank you, Mr Mayor. And I'd just like to thank colleagues for their contribution in the fact that it has made, I was already going to support this motion, but it actually gave me a lot more clarity upon it. And Alderman Yewick tonight, I think probably has made me even more convinced that we have nothing to be frightened by by this motion. And it is, we can find some of this information out, but it takes a hell of a long time. And I'm constantly asked about where we're at with various master plans. And I feel embarrassed when I can't actually give that answer. I think probably, you know, the timeframes for completion, well, maybe it might be regular updates on timeframes for completion. Because as Alderman Chong has alluded to, you know, it's very difficult in these times with contractors and getting things completed on time. But, yeah, I do support the motion. I don't feel fearful for the next council coming in to actually, I think that, pick this up and run with it because it's really important. Thank you.
Alderman Evans?
Very, very briefly, I support the motion. Obviously, we all went away to write the same motion, we'd have different ways of writing it. But I think overall, the themes that I pick up are, you know, that sort of continuous improvement that was touched on earlier and the stuff around transparency. So it's transparency with elected members and then transparency with the public. I think there's probably just needs to be some context given when the priority list is made available publicly. There might be some context around that, which I think quite a few people touched on that. One might be at number ten on the list, but that doesn't necessarily tell the full story. And I do note that just this week, we're putting out some more stuff about city heart. You know, and the fact that these things take a long time and now we, I guess we're not adding another one, but we're continuing that story. And I had another point which has completely escaped me since I stood up. That, oh, we were presented during, and I don't want to reveal.
We've got three minutes.
We were presented with sort of like the, you know, if you want to not spend much, you can get these ones done. If you want to continue with this number, these ones will get done. If you want to spend a bit more, these will get done. And I guess it would be good to have, I guess, more control about which one goes in which column to feed the perspective of how much money we might have to spend or seek from other sources. So now that I've got that in and out of my head, I'd just like to say that I support the motion because I think it's coming from the right place in terms of sorting out an issue that we've all raised.
Thank you. Hand to Chair Alderman Chong for a moment to make a few comments. Certainly, I'm very supportive of the idea that we come up with a master list of these master plans. But I think we have a responsibility to look at, particularly at budget time, how we prioritise our projects and where they go. I think it's an outstanding idea that there is a list, an aspirational list that should be regarded as because things can change all the time. But it's good to have a list on the website of what our aspirations are in terms of projects. You know, all sorts of things can change which might force a change in that order. So Alderman Bonney, in your writer reply, I'd be very interested to hear, first of all, how this list might be adapted over time, that when we promulgate it, it's not locked in stone and can't be changed. That it is going to be a living document. But secondly, I'm a little troubled with the idea that aldermen are expected to agree on a priority of master plans from a workshop, that surely the findings of that workshop need to come back to a council meeting. With those thoughts, I'll take the chair back and leave it to you for a writer reply, unless there are any other speakers.
Alderman Bonney.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you colleagues for your contributions this evening. I suppose right off the bat, I'm going to say that this is about openness, it's about transparency, it's about accountability. As I said in my third paragraph, this will be a dynamic list, a dynamic process. I take the points raised by Alderman Chong. Clearly, it is dynamic. We know now that the decisions we're making today are different from decisions we would have made two years ago because of changing times and other factors. However, from the moment council decides to embark on a master plan, there is a clear obligation, in my view, to ensure that the master plan is delivered in a timely, professional and most cost-effective manner. And I'm sure we'd all agree with that, at least I hope we would. And with persistent resourcing and cost challenges all too often, as was touched on earlier tonight, our community is justifiably frustrated by the length of time it takes to deliver our promised master plans. The motion before the Chair this evening creates an open and transparent reporting mechanism to ensure accountability for delivery timeframes and costs associated with council master plans. With the caveat, of course, that it is dynamic, that things do change, situations do change. But at least we're putting out there, these are our priorities, these are the money and the staff resources that are put towards it. And this is when we expect it to be delivered. And if it's not delivered in that timeframe, there's got to be reasons why. Because our rate payers, as shareholders, deserve that right to understand exactly where things are. As directors, we deserve that level of accountability and transparency as well. The motion will ensure council is totally upfront with our community, and that really is what this is about, on what exactly our strategic priorities are, as well as the costs and the timeframes associated with delivery of master plans throughout our city. And, Mr Mayor, I take your point, sure, we can't be locking that in as a workshop, we can agree it. But by all means, bring it back here in an open and transparent manner. Let us have the debate. Let us then explain to the residents or rate payers of our great city, these are our priorities and this is why. These are the resources and this is the cost that you as residents and rate payers have to bear. But this is what we'll deliver, because that's what we've been elected to do. Mr Mayor, I seek the support of colleagues.
Thank you. So the motion is as circulated by Alderman Bonney, all those in favour? Against? The motion is carried? Moving on to Alderman's question time, item ten. We have questions on notice from Alderman Edmunds and Alderman Warren. Answers to questions on notice, General Manager. Those questions, I might add, are listed in the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. In respect to Alderman Edmunds' question on notice regarding costs of upgrading Blunston Arena, my advice is that the lease between Cricket Tasmania and council began in October 2001. From that date, council was not required to make any contributions to the infrastructure facilities at Blunston Arena. However, in 2009, the light poles were erected, which council had on their asset register costing five million dollars. Council acted as the intermediary for a grant that Cricket Tasmania received to put towards the cost of these lights and hence transferred this grant value to Cricket Tasmania. All other investments since 2001 has been managed by Cricket Tasmania as the leaseholder. Is ultimately a question for Cricket Tasmania whether they can provide a breakdown of government investment at that site.
Thank you. And Alderman Warren's?
Thank you. Alderman Warren had two questions. The first is in relation to council's coastal hazard strategy. This is a number of paragraphs, so please bear with me. We had a total of fifty-two participants attend two coastal management plan information sessions on Sunday, the 12th of June this year. It was timely that we had the sessions on the same day as a very wild weather event. As a community, we're able to talk exactly to the issues they were experiencing then and there. Communication on the sessions included a letter to all Cremona and Lordedale residents on the 15th of January this year regarding both the information sessions and an online survey. The letter also included an information sheet on council's coastal hazard policy and coastal management plans. The in-person information sessions were subsequently postponed due to COVID, but the online survey was completed. A total of forty-four survey responses were received for the Roche's Beach online survey and twenty-four for the Pipe Clay Lagoon survey. Respondents to this survey were emailed directly to update them on the revised date for the information sessions. Posts also went out on council's website and social media, which were shared to local community groups. And we also had signage up at key entrances to Roche's Beach and Cremona coastal areas. The community were also offered the opportunity to engage directly with our staff if they were unable to attend an information session and that offer still stands. We're in the process of pulling together an engagement report to inform aldermen, the community and the consultants working on the coastal management plans of the key findings of the qualitative survey earlier this year and the quantitative survey and the qualitative feedback from the information sessions. Once the draft coastal management plans are finalised later in the year, we'll be seeking council's endorsement to consult with the community further at that time. So that concludes the response to the first question. The second question was in relation to homelessness. And our community services group have put together a detailed update on homelessness in Clarence based on our action plan. With the leave of the Mayor, I'd like to table that for inclusion in the minutes of the meeting and propose not to read it all because it's four pages.
It is quite lengthy. Alderman Warren, are you comfortable with that?
Thank you. I was going to ask if it could be included in the minutes. And I would also like to thank the officers for the amount of effort they put in because a lot of this is not transparent to the community. And so for the community to be able to see that we are actually taking action would be much appreciated.
Thank you. Moving on to item ten point three, answers to questions taken at the last council meeting. Sorry, Alderman Mora?
On ten point three, Mr Mayor. As foreshadowed on the, at Friday's briefing, I asked a question at the last council meeting in relation to getting a residential dollar rate in regards to comparable residents in Kingborough and Vanorkie. And I can see that the four hundred thousand was something I dreamt up on the run and I was very quickly brought to heel by my colleagues who clearly I haven't bought a house for a little while and suggested that the main price is actually seven hundred and fifty thousand. Now, the answers to those questions were quite illuminating and I think, you know, provide a good basis of where this council's at in terms of fiscal. in terms of fiscal responsibility. It's actually a good news story at this stage. But as the minutes, as the agenda records, the comparable rates values were provided at the recent rate modelling workshop. Now, the question was asked in the public forum, yet the answer is buried in a rates modelling workshop. And I would hope that, and I flagged it, were I to basically ask that that question now, that the answer to that question is provided, it would be now read into the public record so that it is a matter of there is a public answer to a public question.
Okay, I think that's reasonable.
Yes, through you, Mayor. My proposal would be to include that in the minutes, if that's okay. Because a little bit like the question from a resident earlier tonight, there are layers of detail in there that would be fairly hard to explain verbally. Without me making a mess of it.
Thank you for trying to save us from obtrusity.
Okay, moving on, well, all the other answers to questions taken at the last council meeting I'll take as read and move to questions without notice. And Alderman Monnet, can I start with you, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a question relating to the Greater Hobart Plan. I believe submissions have now been closed and have now closed. And I understand that from the minister, from the letter from the minister, that somehow or other this is going to telegraph into a review of the straws, the urban growth boundary. Can I ask, what is the relationship between the Greater Hobart Plan and the review of the boundaries? And of the urban growth boundary? And secondly, or part of the same thing, is there a number of properties within the urban growth boundary which are now currently zoned something else? Will those properties be picked up in the review that flows from the Greater Hobart Plan? In other words, are they being discussed inside the Greater Hobart Plan and will they then flow on? So just some explanation around this process that the minister seems to do one thing and then move here and move there. And it's very confusing for us, let alone the four old landowners who are waiting on some decisions.
Thank you, General Manager. Can you assist us, sir?
Yes, I might, with your leave, take that on notice because there is some detail there that is worth getting right again.
And if we could have the answer to that in the minutes?
Oh, definitely. Yes.
For the minutes.
Well, Alderman Kendy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Ewington.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll do. Would it be possible to get a brief report on a record of accidents or incidents in Mornington Road or parking issues or requests for something to be done up there? I've been, I've had quite a few people ask me. I'd just be interested to know what records we have of accidents or incidents or, you know, people asking us to do something about parking, whether we've had official feedback on that. It'd be interesting to get that. And just in a weekly briefing report, that would be really useful.
Thank you, Alderman Ewington. No, I'll just, Mr. Graham. I know our staff have done a lot of work in regard to Mornington Road. Has there been a safety audit done along that?
I think we've put funds in the money, but I think it was actually adopted for this financial year. But we can obtain records of the Department of State Growth reported traffic accidents for the last five years in Mornington and provide that to.
So we will have a.
Yeah, but also, we had requests from businesses and people finding about parking or access to businesses and that sort of stuff. See how much we get requests along those lines.
Okay.
Just for clarification, there's also the police will keep records on those sorts of reports.
That's where we normally go together.
And I suppose, you know, infringement notices that we hand out for people illegally parking as well, that would be something that could be useful as well.
Okay, I'm sure we can put together a comprehensive report.
Yeah, that'd be good. A brief comment. And just about an update on, I know the last time I asked about this one, the temporary stairs over Little Hill Beach access and to the the washdown point for the kayaks, that was going to be in March this year. I know it's sort of, we had difficulty if we had an update on that one. And also to the eastern end of Bellwether Beach stairs, that one's been out of action. We signed up for about five months for a couple of broken treads on that one as well, if we could have an update on where we're at with those.
Questions. Mr. Graham?
Yep, I'll take those. An update next council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Alderman Walker would be the next one. You are, just a moment, Alderman Walker, we're trying to get your voice up.
How's that? How's that? Thank you. Just a quick one. Could you tell me, through the AGM, whether the motion on in relation to derelict properties was passed as part of that AGM that was held and what the results were? If so.
Alderman Chong?
No, it didn't come up at the AGM at all. It wasn't on the agenda for the AGM.
Okay. Oh, look, no.
It was a general meeting, not the.
Yeah, motions of that nature are not dealt with at an annual general meeting. They will be at the next general meeting. Alderman Walker?
Which is in December, is that right?
September?
I think it's September. We'll let you know. Okay. Alderman Peers?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, my question is to Mr. Graham. Is there any delay with the drainage, the new drainage system at the Lindisfarne Oval? Every time I go there, nobody seems to be working there. And I know the cricket club is getting very frustrated. I don't know if the thing's on time or behind time. I just have some form of guide on that.
Mr. Graham?
Through, Mr. Mayor, I will take that one on notice. I know the works have been delayed because of the amount of rainfall that we've had, but I'll ask for a status and advise Alderman.
Alderman Bonney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just keen to understand where things are. There was a hill development.
General Manager?
Thank you for the question. We are waiting on a response from Hunter Developments. And we were expecting that about a week ago, but I I keep on saying that it's coming. We're in contact pretty much fortnightly. So I'm not entirely sure what they're waiting on at the moment. Once we've got that feedback, we'll bring that to a workshop.
Alderman Evans? Von Berto, do you have any questions?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman James?
Oh, yes, thank you. Two questions. Some time ago, the Sport and Recreation Committee went into recess. And my question through you to the appropriate officer, officers. When is it expected to be reactivated? And is it basically dependent upon a new constitution?
You might recall, Alderman James, that we did indeed discuss that and that we are working on a new constitution, which we intend to bring back. It wasn't appropriate to advertise for community members to come on and only be on the committee for several months because their term under the current constitution would finish in, at the end of October. And so we're trying to rewrite the constitution to give us more flexibility in that regard. General Manager?
Thank you. I can provide a further update to that on the upcoming workshop agenda for the 11th. We will be talking to you about a proposal related to special committees of council. And the Sport and Recreation Committee is captured within that framework.
Thank you. Now, the second question is in relation to the Ossam Bay Golf Course proposal. And my question through you to, I believe, Mr. Lovell, or another officer who is.
Put the question, Alderman James, and we'll allocate it to the appropriate officer.
My understanding is that an extension of time has not been granted. And therefore, are we able to conclude that the process and the project will not proceed?
Thank you. I can provide an update on that as well. The DA for the Armin Golf Course gained a statutory extension of six months. It's, as all DAs did because of COVID. So that runs out in early October, I understand. And obviously, the issue will be whether substantial commencement has been achieved by that date.
Alderman Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Given that this is NADOC Week, I'd like to preface my comments by paying my respects to the traditional owners of these lands and their elders, past, present and emerging. And ask if Clarence is connected in any way to events that are occurring this week and where people might find a list of events that are happening in Clarence.
I might put it to the Chair of the Reconciliation Action. But in the meantime. Mr. Tui, are you able to help us in every gap?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As you would have noticed coming in the foyer, you would have noticed some information material about NADOC Week and some other printed information on there, what's available. Today was the raising of the flag down at Piruk Kittner. And some elected members and also some officers were there present at the time. There are other events planned for, however, some of them are by invitation only.
Thank you.
That was my point. It is a week for First Nations people, not by council. So it is that, you know, we are invited rather than that we are holding events.
Thank you. All right. Well, that brings us to the end of the public meeting. So could I thank the members of the public that have lasted the journey with us and ask to feed the case, please?